With liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the March 20th, 2023 Board of Selectments meeting. Could we please have a moment of silence for all those suffering from the natural disasters and wars? On the agenda this evening, we have public service announcements. At 6:35, we have a public hearing and applications been filed by Cocino on Main LLC doing business as Condesa Restaurant and Tequila Bar for a new liquor license at the premise currently located, excuse me, at 178 Main Street, Unit A, Sturbridge, Mass. Then we have the Police Department report, Town Administrator's update. Then we have several action items. We have the Charter Review Committee recommendations for revision to the town charter, application for a common victual license for Cocina on Main doing business as Condesa. We have an application for live entertainment at the same place. We have an appointment of James Warner as a full-time dispatcher for the Sturbridge Police Department at the hourly rate of $22.34 effective March 21st, 2023. We have an application for a Hock and Pedler license for Ryan. Is Ryan here? Okay, how do you say your last name? Excuse me.
Mr. Davis.
Okay, I'll call on you to say it when need be. Okay, for Ryan's tree service, change in reclassification from executive assistant to administrative coordinator and constituent liaison, creation of a disability commission, request to waive all town imposed permit and application fees for Joshua Hyde Library, HVAC accessibility project, to waive all town imposed permit and/or application fees for the senior center renovation addition project, resignation of Christine Lucia, resignation of Mark Anguilla from the Sturbridge DPW, resignation of Carrie Sewell from the Sturbridge Police Department. We have a request to approve and sign the warrant for 2023 annual town election, consideration of possible action to open the annual town meeting warrant, old business, new business, correspondence. There are no minutes tonight, citizens forum. And then we do have a request for executive session, and then we shall adjourn. So, back to public service announcements. Ian?
I have none.
Chase?
I have none, thank you.
Mary?
Happy, is today a happy first day of spring?
Yes.
New beginnings for everybody. God bless.
Okay, and for the general public, absentee ballots are in. Okay, we have a few seconds. No, I have exactly 6:35. So, we have a request for public hearing. Mary, do you have the notice?
It must be behind the license application.
It should be next to you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, my goodness, it's right here. Notification is hereby given that an application has been filed by Cosina, is that right? Cosina on Main Street Limited Liability Company doing business as Condesa Restaurant and Tequila Bar. The Sturbridge Board of Selectment, in accordance with Mass General Lodge, Chapter 138, a public hearing will be held on Monday, March 20, 2023, 6:35 at Veterans Memorial Hall in Sturbridge.
Okay, could you come? The microphone is actually for the people at home. It's being televised.
Okay.
Because we can hear. Okay, and I'm sure people would like to hear about your project.
Okay. Hello. So, my name's Ernesto Leon. I'm one of the partners in the business, and we, like you mentioned in the application, we're applying for a liquor license for a full-service restaurant at the address mentioned.
Okay, are you, you're going to be the manager too, right?
I'll be one of them, but we will be hiring a general manager.
Okay, you'll have to come back for that when you do.
Okay, it's probably really down the road, like, once we, it may be at the renewal.
But that's okay, but any change in the license has to be noted.
Yes, of course.
Okay, are you yourself chips certified?
Yes.
Okay, because you've been in the business, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, any, why don't you tell the people at home where the 178 Main Street is?
Where it is?
Yes.
It's in the plaza there with Shaw's, it's one of the main anchors, and we will be on the side where the renovations have been taking place with the new Planet Fitness and an Autozone that just opened, and we are the corner tenant.
Yeah, at the far left.
Yes.
Okay, any questions from the board?
I'm just curious, because we can have dinner at your Italian restaurant, then go over to Planet Fitness, try to burn it off.
I was thinking they go very well together.
Or vice versa, I don't know which better.
Why?
Just enough chips and salsa.
Why didn't my mind work that way?
I did, I went there.
I'm just curious, 550 square-footed outdoors, too. Were you planning on having an outdoor patio?
Yes, yeah. I don't know if you're familiar with that property, but the last few feet of that property, there is an existing, like, overhang that kind of has a roof to some square footage there, and we're taking advantage of that as, obviously, it'll be enclosed, barriers and everything.
Right, because it's already been approved for such by the planning board.
Correct.
No, I was just curious where it is. It's in the front of the?
Yes, it's, so if you're facing the building, it's to the left of the main entrance.
Anyone else?
I'm just curious when you plan on opening.
Ideally, I mean, it depends on various things, but we're probably, we're shooting for your late summer, early fall as a date, yeah.
Nice, thank you for your interest in Sturbridge.
No, no, thank you, yeah.
I know the kids in Mary's class were ready for it, a couple of them brought up the Mexican restaurant.
What's that?
The kids in your class were ready.
Oh, yes, so we had Read Across America, and our town administrator was kind enough to come in and read a book to the class, the sixth grade, and they had a lot of questions, but when your restaurant is open.
Oh, really?
So, they're hearing it from their parents or in the playground, I don't know.
Oh, okay, well, that's exciting.
It's chatter.
Yeah, it's chatter, they ask very pertinent questions. When is that restaurant coming to Shaw's?
We have a Mexican restaurant coming, yeah.
Oh, that's awesome, thank you. We're excited.
As long as they're interested in the restaurant, not the liquor license.
Not the margaritas.
Okay, it is a public hearing, anyone in the public have comment?
I just have a question.
Mary?
I'm just curious, are we having a difficult time finding employees?
I mean, there are other locations, it's, you know, it comes and goes in waves. I mean, we've been lucky, for the most part, we don't have, I feel that we don't have as much turnaround as, I guess, is average in the industry, but, so, I mean, it can be a challenge, but we've been okay so far.
I've just heard of other restaurant owners having difficulty.
Yeah, no, it's common, for sure.
With servers and stuff.
Yes.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Okay, somebody want to make a motion on the license?
I will move to approve the liquor license for Cocina on Main LLC doing business as Condesa Restaurant and Tequila Bar for a new liquor license at the premise, currently located at 178 Main Street, Unit A, Sturbridge, Mass., 01566.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor? Good luck.
Thank you.
Now, I'm going to change a few things around on the agenda, because I noticed you have two other licenses that should take about a second.
Okay.
If the Charter Review Committee people have no objection, because I know some of you people talk a lot, so we'll do the easy ones. Notice two of them react.
Oh, yeah.
How to win friends.
And influence people.
Okay, so that takes care of that one, and then you have an application for a common victual license. Does anybody have a question on that?
I will move to approve the application for a common victual license for Cocina on Main LLC doing business as Condesa Restaurant and Tequila Bar, 178 Main Street, Sturbridge.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, all in favor? Okay, and then you also have a request for an entertainment license.
I'm just curious, what kind of entertainment are you envisioning?
Those are for, it's not something that we do so routinely, but we just, every now and then we'll have an event, or we'll maybe have a live band or something like that, like a mariachi band, for a specific date that's of significance, but that's mainly it, live music.
Yeah, it's not a consistent thing, it's a...
No, no, and it doesn't really mean, like, extended hours or anything like that, it's just during normal operating hours.
Okay, any Irish music if you play?
We can take, we can take recommendations.
The weekend, my, oh, hey, babe.
Exactly, yeah.
I know a few people that could sing.
Okay, bring them on, bring them along.
Some Irish people.
Okay, someone want to make a motion then on the entertainment license?
I'll make a motion to approve the application for a live entertainment license for Cocina on Main LLC DBA Condesa Restaurant and Tequila Bar at 178 Main Street, Unit A, Sturbridge.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, so you're all set?
Great, thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
And good luck. We shall be there.
Yes. That's in my list of food wants.
Yeah.
I picked the right town to work.
Okay, so we have the department reports, please, Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Got January and February to go over. Calls for service, January 2,754 calls, get 67 arrests or summonses during the month of January. Mutual aid requests, six requests, so for January compared to 2022, 2023, we're up about 500 calls for January. Some highlights of our operations is we were awarded Gold Award from AAA Marine One for our achievements and efforts for our traffic safety initiatives that we take part in. I think for the past 16 years that I've been here, Sturbridge has received the Gold Award almost every year for our traffic safety initiatives, so that was great.
That's good.
Lead dispatcher Barbara Boydow received the Traffic Safety Hero of the Year for her continued efforts to educate and protect the citizens of the community, coordinating child car seat checkpoints, doing check installations outside the police station, she's very active in that, so that was a great job by her to receive that award.
Chief, did we get notification on that earlier?
For the Traffic Safety Award?
For Barbara.
I might have concluded a letter of appreciation in my, maybe in my last report, so maybe...
Well, I mean, for the board to send a letter to her.
Oh, no.
I don't think we have.
Okay, so, Michelle?
We'll get a letter, yeah.
Yeah, to congratulate Barbara. Okay, go ahead, Chief.
Quite a bit of training, as usual, for January. We got Officer Titula, just is finishing up the training with Rocky, for the most part, for his general behavior. He's going to continue to train once a week for search and rescue, because we're cross-training him for both, so that's been going very well. January school calls, Burgess, we had a suspicious vehicle call and some, an ambulance call. The junior high, we had four calls at, which were, one was threats or harassment, assist citizens, 911 calls, then the senior high, we had, looks like parking violations, ambulance calls, suspicious activity, harassing phone calls, assist citizens, a couple 911 hangups, one threat, one investigation, we served one warrant to school, and we had an assault and battery up at the school for January. That's January, if you have any questions on that.
Mary, you have a question?
Well, no, I just, you know about the assault and battery, I mean, what did it involve?
Assault and battery.
Yeah, at the school. I mean, I know what that is, but...
Yeah.
It was like...
I'd hope so.
Students, teachers?
Yeah, students.
Oh, with each other?
Yes.
Oh.
Students with each other, that was that call. That's it for January.
Okay, Chief, I notice on the business house checks, it's up year-to-date, it's up quite a bit from last year, 661 and 463. Is that because more people are going away for the winter?
I, I think what it depends on, these numbers are very hard to pinpoint why they are, they are the way they are. If they're not, if our officers aren't getting as many calls, which this month they are up, but, you know, it depends on the officers, what they're calling in, what they're working on on the side, you know, some officers may do more traffic, maybe this month they were just getting more house checks, and it could be some winter vacation where people are going, so we do have a service in town where people will drop off requests, and if they drop off, we try to make daily checks of their residential property, and because it is wintertime, I'm sure that does, for just help those numbers go up.
Okay, thank you. Mary?
I just had one more question on the school calls.
Yep.
What is the assist citizens slash group, four times, four visits? Is that like the same group you were assisting, or is that four different?
No, no, it would be different, I'm just going to have to pull up my paperwork here. The second one, there was an issue regarding a juvenile and his mother, so the officers went up there to assist with that. The third one was a male and female came to the police station to speak with an officer in regards to their daughter who was at the school and had some concerns with some stuff And the fourth one was female party was reporting a call from the principal regarding an incident with her son that occurred at the school.
Okay, so that label, that assist citizens slash group encompasses a lot of different situations.
It's not just one.
Yeah, so, yeah, as you can see, it can vary from, if, like, the assault and battery was a specific assault and battery, the assist citizen or group could mean a variety.
It's like an umbrella.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
I'm all set.
All right, February, 1,271 calls for service, 39 arrests slash criminal complaints, 39 incident reports, 150 motor vehicle citations, business checks, 503, couple domestic, 10 domestic disturbances, six thefts, 14 calls for service for mutual aid to have other towns come assist us during that month. Department Operations, Rocky was on Boston News, which was kind of neat, and him and his brothers and sisters all made the news, and I thought that was pretty neat, because there's quite a few communities that are applying for getting community care dogs, so it's becoming quite popular.
Are Rocky's brothers and sisters all trained to be?
Yeah, they're all, they're all part of, it's called GOFE, they all come from the same family in Walpole, Mass., so. Training, continuing as usual. School call, Burgess, we had two calls, a 911 call and a burglar alarm. Assist citizen at the, at the junior high, we had eight calls at the high school, one was an erratic operation, 911 trace, we get those here and there. Ambulance call, another assist citizens group, accident with property damage, accident with a hit and run, and that was it for the schools. Put it for February.
Okay, Mary, I'm sorry, here I am with the school again, but just tell me, what's a hot wash meeting?
A hot wash meeting?
Yeah.
Where do you see that one?
On February 3rd.
On training?
It just says hot wash meeting with members of the SPD, and then a meeting with the school administration, hot wash until February 3rd. I'm glad I'm not the only one that doesn't know what that means.
Well, hot wash is a debrief, and I'm just trying to remember.
Oh, that's what that's called?
Yeah, it's a debrief, so if there was an incident, and I don't know, I don't recall what the incident is off the top of my head, but if you, we have some type of incident that involves some type of major response, whether it be a pursuit or something that a lot of officers are involved, we will debrief, we will try to evaluate, how can we improve, what did we do right, what did we do wrong, so next time we have to deal with that situation again, everybody that was involved with that may...
Okay.
May try to deal with the situation.
That's called a hot wash?
That's called a hot wash, yes. I think that's...
Did anybody else know that here? You probably all did, right?
No, I don't know.
It's training, and I knew the...
It's a police term.
And I believe it actually stemmed from the fire department, because they do a hot wash after a lot of major incidents as well, but hot wash or debrief, they're...
Okay, same thing, all right, I don't need to know that. Okay. Yeah, yeah, I could, it sounds like a cold wash to me, but...
Yeah.
It's like an awakening, right, to see if you did things right?
Right, exactly, it's, you know, we, and check on people's well-being, you know, if we go to a fatal crash or whatever, we'll have everybody come in after, have a debrief, see if everybody's doing all right, and stuff like that.
Okay, anything else? Well, we can do the appointment now.
Sure, that'd be great. James, you want to come up?
Tonight, I'm bringing James Warner in front of you for appointment as a full-time dispatcher. Mr. Warner is an honorably retired Air Force veteran with 20 years of service. Mr. Warner also possesses a Masters of Science in Counterterrorism from Nichols College, a Bachelor's of Arts in Communications from Worcester State University, and Associates of Applied Science from Community College of the Air Force. We've completed a thorough background check on him, and I recommend appointing Mr. Warner as a full-time dispatcher effective March 21st, 2023, with hourly rate of $22.34 an hour.
Okay, any questions, comments from the board? I've been to say welcome aboard.
Thank you, I'm happy to be here, I'm excited to get started.
Tomorrow. We don't waste time.
It's been, it's been an arduous climb after my retirement and finding employment, so I'm very thankful that the Sturbridge Police Department is taking a chance and investing their time and effort into me, and I plan to reciprocate that and putting my best effort into what they, what we do.
Okay, very good. Anything else from the board?
Take the Marine Air Force photograph, just like to prove that this does...
I did tell Robin I was not going to hold the fact that he was in the Air Force.
I was shocked when I put it to my office, it said Air Force, I said, really? I don't think the chief would do that.
I think it's a great, he did 20 years of service for the country, and I'm happy to bring him on board.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion then?
Make a motion to confirm the appointment of James Warner as a full-time dispatcher for the Sturbridge Police Department at an hourly rate of $22.34 effective March 21st, 2023.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, congratulations.
Thanks, James.
Thank you very much.
And welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Yes, you too, it's still bright out there.
I know, it's crazy, I love it.
Okay, Robin, are we going to go into depth on your goals, because...
No, I think I just wanted the board to approve that list and say that you concur with what Michelle jotted down, and I'm good with it. I mean, we kind of went into depth with it the day of the...
But we don't have a list.
Yeah, in the packet. Yeah, there's a list in the packet.
Do you have it in your packet?
It was a one-page...
Yeah, no, I didn't see that. Dog got it.
I mean, if you want to put it off a week, I don't, it's fine.
Yeah, we'll hold it so we can...
I think it, I mean, I know it's exhaustive, but I think Jamie should be here too, so all five of us are here to look at it.
Okay, that's fine.
And then we don't keep these people waiting as long too.
Okay.
Good. I have mine.
Well, sometimes the paper sticks. Static electricity.
We'll blame it on that.
Okay, so now we get to the Charter Review Committee.
I do have some other stuff after, but I can go after them if we want to just move them ahead.
Yeah, they...
Yeah, that makes, yeah.
Shifted them enough.
I just didn't put anything down on the agenda, but I do have a couple of things, but we, absolutely, I'm fine with, my not in a rush.
Okay, good evening, gentlemen, and would you introduce yourself for the record and the people at home?
Thank you, thank you for letting us come and meet with the distinguished Board of Selectmen. We are optimistic that we will, that when the Charter Review Committee in five years hence comes before you, they will greet you as the new select board, and we'll go into that in more length. My name is Bill Hagerty, I'm the, I've been elected Chair of the Charter Review Committee. This is my fourth Charter Review Committee, I think it'll probably be my last.
Oh, if, no, no.
I have the pleasure of working with some very distinguished folks. To my left is Steve Sexton, to my right is Larry Morrison, who's contributed significantly. Unfortunately, we have two members who are not... Unfortunately, we have two members who are not able to be with us this evening, Kristi Pesci, who was the Vice Chair, and also Priscilla Jimmison, who was a member of the committee as well. So we had a very hard-working committee. We started out actually in December of 2021. We had a meeting very shortly before Christmas with the then-departing town administrator, it was his last day, and we met, and as we were leaving, we were given a copy of the charter, and we began working on it in January of 2022. Larry and I had the pleasure of serving on the previous Charter Review Committee, and as we began to go through the charter, Larry and I kept looking at each other and saying, didn't we do that last time? And after several meetings, we called the, I called the Secretary of State's office to see what they had on record as being the charter for the town, and discovered that the charter that we were given was the charter, the old charter preceded the 2015 Charter Review Committee. So once we got the charter, the actual charter, which I might add also was incorrectly posted on the website, we went right to work. We had meetings with all of the department heads and officers in the community, we wanted their input. We also had the opportunity to use technology and to invite residents of the community to submit suggestions that they might have in terms of things that might make the government of Sturbridge operate more effectively. The Charter Reviews Committee's objective is pretty clearly outlined in the report, which you should have received several weeks ago. I'm not going to labor it, but basically what we sought to do was to produce a workable, revised town charter, which in clear, readily understandable language meets and anticipates the public's foreseeable needs, and it sets the framework for efficient, responsive, and productive government policymaking and service delivery. So that was our objective, and we went to work. And what we have this evening for you, in the document, the charter, we have highlighted in yellow the areas where changes, we would see the need to make changes. Some of the changes are smaller ones, are grammatical ones, and issues where things should be capitalized. We, coming from education as I am, and with Larry's background, you know, we did cross the Ts and dot the Is all over the place. But we also made some recommendations that we feel would be beneficial with respect to improving Sturbridge's operation. Number one, we suggested that the name of the Board of Selectmen be changed to the Select Board. And following that, we also removed all gender references in the charter. We had, the previous Charter Committee, any Review Committee had done a pretty good job of that, but we decided to make sure that it was done well, and I think the charter that we have presented to you is free of all of those. In the charter, we have added language that would assign the moderator the sole responsibility to ensure that diverse viewpoints and concerns are represented and heard at town meetings. The, if you, if you look at the reference to 32, that's Section 3, you know, Point 2, so that it makes a specific reference to the charter. We also assigned to the moderator the sole discretion to determine the means and method by which votes are made electronically or by any other form at town meetings. A substantial one, we are recommending that the annual town meeting be moved from the first Monday in June to the fourth Monday in April, which would be a little bit of a change. We also suggested that attendance or required attendance of all department heads at all sessions of the special, of special town meetings be determined by the town administrator. We didn't feel that there, in some instances where you would have a special town meeting, that it was necessary to have all the department heads there, and that the town administrator should have the privilege of determining whether it's necessary for those individuals to be in attendance. We also require selectmen subject to recall to recuse themselves from duties of the recall process. And we did, we did do a little bit of work on the, on the issue of recall, although we were not anticipating by any means that that would be a hot issue, but we, again, looking back at our objective in terms of thinking about what could happen and what we should work to make sure that we're, the town is prepared to deal with, move with us to take a hard look at that. And at that point, I'm going to sort of pass off to Larry, and let Larry continue with a little bit of our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening. Three interlocking points for context, as you hear this presentation and study the report you have, and for the viewing public's benefit. At all times, the members of the Charter Review Committee were striving to give to you as a draft a document that balances authorities so that any office has all that it needs to fulfill its responsibilities, but not too little and not too much. And we also aimed to spread authority so that there was, again, a balance. As I say, these are interlocking. We always ask, and the chairman just now alluded to it, asked ourselves three questions over and over. What if? The idea being, in the middle of something, you can't start, what are we going to do now? What if? The next question, okay, fine, then what? Is the solution suddenly a problem? Carry, take it to the nth degree, and always asking, using the most important letter in the alphabet. Why? The answer to that brings you back to, well, but what if? And around and around. We did that throughout. And in so doing, we were doing, I think, two things at once, looking at the document as a whole and dismantling it into all of its parts. Meanwhile, looking at all the parts and building it to the whole, and striving to see the day in, day out, as well as, in the philosophical sense of local self-government, the relationships of those parts. Where is the balance for the authority I was speaking of a minute ago? Like the workings of a watch, you know, there are a lot of pieces in it, they all got to work right, but they all got to work together, or you literally and figuratively lose time. So, and could be worse than that. So please keep that in mind when you hear all that's been given to you and will be for your decision-making. Carrying forward then in some specifics, the draft, the proposal, the recommendation assigns duties required of the selectmen in the recall process to the town clerk. In the event, all selectmen are subject to recall at about the same time. In any event, all the members are now subject to recall, the town must go on, the emergency conditions cannot apply because there isn't one or two selectmen anymore. So then what? We propose that the town clerk in that event receive temporarily the duties reserved for the selectmen. Also, require the search committee for town administrator to recommend to the selectmen no fewer than two and no more than three candidates. Our chairman, myself, and our vice chairman, Kristi Pesci, have served on town administrative search committees, and in one of a few years ago, some years ago now, after, in fact, the board chair served, we sat next to each other. After we had 75, we didn't have enough, 75 applicants, five of them from Bremerton, Washington, believe it or not. Well, we had to re-advertise because we had to have enough plausible names. We weren't crazy about some of the names we brought forward, and we saw directly, as it happened, from our own experience, on that responsibility, we transported it to the current one and said, if it's not two, it's three for the board to make a decision. Which decision could always be send it back and start over, of course, but to keep looking and winnowing and trying to find a fourth, let's say, or a fifth, is, becomes a travesty. So that is why you have that recommendation. Also, exclude from the town administrator's jurisdiction the authority to make appointments under the jurisdiction of the superintendent of schools, board of library trustees, town clerk, and moderator. I think that is probably an oversight. This documents it because basically this echoes what goes on anyway, but it's better to avoid a discussion where, which could have its own lurking reasons, where people would rather have the issue than the decision. Well, that can be avoided, so it's proposed to be made hard and fast until the next review. Likewise, to exclude from the town administrator's jurisdiction the care, custody, and control over the rental and use of town property that is under the jurisdiction of the superintendent of schools, board of library trustees, and the conservation commission. And continuing, require the town administrator and the town clerk to inventory for accuracy and complete lists, the list of all offices, committees, boards, and commissions every six months. Both Mr. Hagerty and I, and this is not to personalize it, it is to draw on direct experience, sitting in the prior Charter Review Committee with the clerk, going through names and finding dead people listed as active, and finding town bodies that did not exist. They used to, well, that is, the public deserves better. So we're proposing that every six months, those two officials put their heads together and keep it squared away. Also, clarify those town offices not subject to appointment by the town administrator. Form, further now, form the search committees for police chief, fire chief, and director of public works respectively, with two voters who are not town employees, except four special town employees, and three members who may be residents or non-residents, and who are qualified due to their relevant career experience in the past. An active or a retired state trooper or someone of the highest rank has served. Sometimes it's an active or retired United States deputy marshal or someone else who knows the questions and can spot the answers, and who has, when they're done, they'll be thanked, and they'll walk away, and that'll be it. And, and they out of five would constitute three. They may live in town, they don't have to. I now yield to my colleague.
Before you yield, Larry, just a comment on that one. Currently, the charter reads that the town administrator serves on that search committee, which is sort of ludicrous, because if he serves on, or she serves on the search committee, then, then in many respects, the, the decision is already made because he's or she is part of that process. So the search committee now makes the recommendation to the town administrator, who is no longer on that search committee.
And that recommendation came from the prior town administrator, who was the interim, you'll recall, someone who was well-traveled in the good sense of the word, and it came from that, that individual. We adopted it thinking it represented good thinking and good practice.
Stephen, you're on.
Thank you, Larry, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next four or five thematically, I think, represent much of the same thinking, and I think in terms of our discussions with department heads, other representatives, you know, there was, we're making probably what is understood in terms of day-to-day, how government works around here, making it more explicit in terms of some of these roles and responsibilities, quite frankly. So bullet number one that I have here, we just mentioned, right, in terms of removing the town administrator's membership on the search committees, I'll jump down to the next one, which is similar to the number of candidates, require the search committee to recommend to the town administrator no fewer than two, no more than three candidates for police chief, fire chief, and director of public works. This is in Section 6.5 of the charter. Further, require the town administrator to recommend to the selectmen for their confirmation with respect to those searches, the best qualified applicant for the appointment. The next two, I just want to make sure in terms of coupling them, right, those are really all with respect to that particular selection of those key roles. The next two are really then around appointments, right, of town personnel. So we have placed solely within the authority of the town administrator without the confirmation of the selectmen, the appointment of any candidate for employment to any position, which does not hold the authority to, one, expend public funds, two, hire or terminate, three, review the work of others for purposes of promotion, demotion, or for a determined compensation. The thought process being to allow the government to operate more efficiently, many of the staff positions, right, which don't have that level of authority can then be managed more effectively and easily versus having everything be put up for approval by the select board, right? Further, authorize the town administrator the option to delegate any and all parts of any search process, except for the authority of the town administrator to recommend candidates for confirmation by, I should say the select board, we missed that.
Currently, selectmen.
Currently, selectmen, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And reduce from one year to 90 days, this is in Section 7, the deadline for the select board to make public the town charter immediately after voter approval at an election, which based upon last time, it lingered, this way it's done, and in a much more timely manner, and posted accordingly, mitigate the issues that we faced as well.
Moving on, make some closing remarks. Basically, we also had some collateral findings which we shared with you, and I'm not going to go into them at length, but we felt that very often, as we listened to our suggestions or recommendations from department heads or town officers, that there was a lot of confusion between bylaws and, and the charter. And often, the, what one assumed was functional, was in reality, it was in the bylaws, but it was contradictory to the town charter. And we feel very strongly, and I think we made the recommendation back in 2015, because we found it then as well, that there needs to be more attention paid to the charter and the bylaws to. and the bylaws to make sure that they are consistent.
Bill, I don't mean to interrupt you, but...
You can do that, Mary.
It was, anytime, right?
Anytime.
The codification process that the town went through did that, I want to say, two years ago. Bylaws, charter, was the reference to state law, accurate and everything.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think...
A lot of, a lot of that's been done.
And I think it's, but I think the education of the town employees and officers needs to happen, because they don't, they don't see it necessarily. And I also would check, I think my understanding is that the charter that was codified was the, not the charter that was in effect at the time. So you might want to check that, and I'm not, you know, I'm not telling you that with any degree of certainty.
I hope we used the right, because it was done fairly recently. I have the same recollection. I was going to say, more like, three years ago. And I hope that we were using the proper charter when we codified, because that was a long process.
Yeah.
And hopefully, we got it directly from the state, which is where you got the correct one, right?
Yes.
And we were operating on our website and the one we have in the town hall, which was not the correct one. So it will depend on what we use to codify, but...
Yes, you may want to, you may want to check that in terms of codification.
That took a long time. Prue-Hopkins Poobon came and gave the presentation, if I recall.
Well, all the departments answered questions and clarified things, and then there was a summary report.
We did, you know, give you a sense of some of the things that we looked at, but did, and we heard from various people who sat with us to discuss the issue. For example, we discussed whether the town administrator should appoint the recreation department director, the board of health agent, and/or supervisor. And we did not feel that that was something that we, as a charter review committee, wanted to get into at this time, but it's something that we feel that the board of selectmen should, you know, take a, take a hard look at. Should there be a permanent capital planning committee? The interim town administrator had indicated to us that there was not a capital planning committee. However, we heard later in meetings with some department officials that they were part of the capital planning committee. So, again, it's an issue that the board may want to look at. We did not choose to, you know, address it in terms of our charter revisions. Should the selectmen or the town administrator appoint the town council for a definite term, subject to renewal? Again, we felt that that was something that should be reviewed and given some consideration by the board of selectmen. The conservation commission went through the process of actually having legislation sponsored in the legislature and passed and signed by the governor to permit the addition of two associate members to the charter commission, not the charter commission, I'm sorry, the conservation commission. We did not address that in the charter, because it's law. The question is, should that be in the charter, even though it is law? And we did not feel that it was an area that we wanted to address. Should be term limits set for elected officials, subject to grandfathering of current officials? Again, you know, an issue that we felt that the board maybe should consider at some point, looking at, but the review committee did not do that. Should the bylaws undergo a complete review up for consistency with the current charter and relevance? And again, we talked about that a little bit earlier, with respect to that. The next step, where we go from here? If you're familiar with the part of the charter which describes it, basically, we, in many respects, have misleading our work. We have made our recommendations to you. It is now up to the board of selectmen to make the determination on any or all of the recommendations that have been presented to you, whether you wish to have them considered by the town through a warrant, the warrant article process. If they are approved by the warrant, by the warrant article process at an annual town meeting or special town meeting, then they would be subject to a vote in a town election. Presumably, if you were to respond on a timely basis, hopefully, it would go before town meeting in this, this spring, and then into election, the town election next, next spring, so that it, you know, there's a delay. I would like to make one comment in that, you know, I think that part of our start late, we went back and looked to see when previous charter review committees were established. And the previous one that Larry and I served on in 2015 was appointed in August. This one was not appointed until December. So I'm not sure who's responsibility that is, but I would encourage you to give, give them, so they can have some time to do the work. It was sort of, in many respects, we were under the gun. We met twice a month from that January through this, this past fall, so, or actually, end of December, so it was, it was a rather time-consuming process, and it's a credit to the commitment of our, of our members.
In between those meetings, each of us assigned each other research projects, and we would come back and report and stand scrutiny from the other four. What about this? What about that? Isn't there a gap between this and that? Why did you minimize that? Why'd you go crazy over that? We pushed each other, and that was what we expected, that you expected us to do. So that's why we did it.
I would like to commend and thank very much Michelle for everything she did. She was constantly getting email from me saying, can we have veterans' hall on this Thursday? We don't have, we don't have a quorum. Would you cancel that meeting? Can we have it for the next Thursday? And she was wonderful, and including the fact that, you know, it took me a while to figure it out, but that she was so helpful, that I didn't really have to buy the reams of paper to run things off, that she was more than happy to do it. So we finally got to that, that place with this presentation, so I'm deeply appreciative of that. And again, thank you so very much for doing that, Michelle.
A question, if you know. Are we being discharged as a committee tonight? Or are you going to take, under advisement, call us back if you have further assignments? If you're rejecting it in whole or in any part? What should we be prepared for?
My feeling would be to keep you people going.
We're not letting you go, yet, because, that's a quick, that's an easy...
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't really...
The only access is by death.
...to absorb it. So at our next meeting, we will, and we will definitely take a vote on, you know, we approve of this one, we'll place and support it, or...
Do you want us at that next meeting?
Tough question, Larry.
Mary, I had a question tonight about one.
You too, so go ahead first.
Just pure mind, or...
Oh, no, no, you go.
All right, I just had a question I wanted to make. First of all, I want to thank you for how much work you've done, twice a month for your, I know, and you had a lot of smart people on the committee, so thank you.
They are?
But, that's right. There was one article that I was concerned with, and I want you to help me understand it.
Sure.
And it's, as far as the town administrator's membership in a search committee, and I think you guys said it was ludicrous, but when I think about our town administrator and our CEO, and I've been on the board, and I've had Leon, Jeff, and now Robin, I think of them as our chief, chief operating officer here in the community, and they're who runs the day-to-day operations and oversees all the employees. And I just think having them have a voice on that committee in choosing a department head of that importance is a benefit. So I guess I just wanted to hear your side, as why you don't feel that's a benefit.
Yeah, I can, I can, I'll start responding, and Larry and Steve jump in. The, actually, it was a recommendation of the interim administrator. He thought, he was the one that thought it was sort of, for lack of a better term, stupid, that the town administrator's going to be on a search committee, and the search committee's going to make a recommendation. And what happens if he, that committee makes a recommendation contrary to his, you know, what he, you know, chooses to do? So then is he bound, as a member of that committee, to, to support that particular candidate? So the feeling was that if the search committee operates independently, makes a recommendation, and then, as you'll note, that we made the comment, our statement, that, in the charter, that the town man, our town administrator then appoints the best candidate. So it doesn't force that administrator to necessarily recommend the candidate that the search committee suggested.
I can see that. I just think the expertise of a town administrator, in knowing the inner workings of the town, knowing where the problem areas are, that somebody on the search committee may not know all the top-secret information, for lack of a better word. And, you know, they may not know where there's a problem, and they, and that town administrator may see a candidate that might excel in an area that could handle a problem. I just think that food for thought is a healthy thing in a committee.
Well, you raise a good point, and I will say that it didn't occur to me quite the way you are now looking at it, when I participated. So thank you. In addition to the, creating the conditions in which you have a four-to-one vote, everybody, the selectee, the selector, know, well, this will be interesting, how's this going to work out? There could be, and I'm, I'm not a selectman, and I'm only speaking with the properly limited authority, if it's even that, to say that it may be worth considering, five members, and the ex-officio is the town administrator, participates, speaks, doesn't vote, but chimes in, just like anybody else.
I like that. That's, that's something that I think, you know, could be beneficial, so, just my two cents.
As opposed to that, to that administrator re-interviewing that person and going through the whole process before they bring him before the board and recommend, they're there, they see it the whole time.
Mary, you have a question? I have a whole separate list of questions, but can I follow up with this concern?
Sure.
So you, Larry, you said that, I think it was Bob, right, our interim, that made this suggestion, and you had said, if the search committee makes a recommendation that the TA doesn't agree with, is he or she forced to accept it and support it? And that was one of the reasons Bob thought it was silly, or, or not effective, or whatever adjective he wanted to use. Couldn't the TA simply voice a different opinion? Because usually, the search committees do take a vote.
Yeah.
It wouldn't, and I don't know how I feel about this yet, but it just wouldn't be a unanimous recommendation to the board.
Like any other vote, four-to-one.
It would be a minority position.
It's advisory, if you read the way the charter operates, I go, the advisory, because ultimately, the authority to make the recommendation to the select board, hopefully, is, you know, dependent upon the town administrator. In other words, if the search committee makes a recommendation, and he or she sees it as, when she vets a candidate further, that that is not the best candidate, they may recommend someone totally different.
Yeah, but the town administrator would have had that knowledge before any recommendations made. I think it's beneficial to have the town administrator. They have the knowledge of the town, they have the knowledge of the people. On the other hand, you're saying the town administrator could mix any candidate that the committee would vote for, which is...
To give you an example, a more direct one, I just finished serving on a search committee for a new director of special education for a townhouse district. We made a recommendation to the superintendent. The superintendent has interviewed the candidates and is, is making, we recommended two candidates, she's making the final choice.
Yeah, but if the TA is part of the...
Now, she could have said to us...
Our S.
Yeah, she could have said to us, you're not, I'm not happy with either of them. You know, let's, we re-advertise and either leave it with our, this search committee, or appoint a new one.
Yeah, I'm not sure how I feel about that one.
Any question?
I need to think a little bit more about it, yeah, go.
I was curious on why the move on the town meeting date?
Oh.
Why, why the move on the town meeting date from June to April? Just curious.
The new date to the town meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Basically, you know, there was a lot of discussion, I think, on that. The initial, and I can, I was on the charter review committee that moved it to June. And I think of the reason we moved it is we heard that the state does not provide information that permits the finance committee, or the, the town administrator, or the board of selectmen, to really put together a, a real, sound budget. And that by delaying it to June, you were going to be in a much better position. I think what we have all found out over the past few years since we moved the town meeting is that you don't have a hell of a lot more information in June than you probably have in April. So that we said, and attendance was much better in April, because we were at the point where kids weren't involved in activities beyond the school day, where mom and dad were expected to be there. And so we felt that going back to April, originally, we were early April, we felt that at the end of April made a lot more sense.
Yeah, it used to always, years be second Monday for election and fourth Monday for town meeting. And it also gave that two-week span for any new selectmen to get acquainted with issues and budgets and stuff. But that, that was the thinking at the time, and this is going back quite a ways, and it didn't work the way it was.
It doesn't go that far back, because I was still in the picture, but...
Well, it's one that I don't have to ruminate over, like, because I fully support the change
back to April. And I think I was either on the finance committee, it was my first term as, on select board, I'm already saying, making the change, select board. And that was, they didn't have the cherry sheets, and by June, the budget could be more firmly established, because the cherry sheets were in. I don't know if that's the case or not, I don't know, you know, Barbara Berry's position and all of that. I will say, if anything, our attendance at town meeting is abysmal, and it has declined since I first became involved in the town, when it was in April. And I don't think June is a good date at all. People don't have a long summer, and nobody is thinking about town meetings in June. Elections are in April, people vote in April, and it's fresh in their mind. Come June, people don't even want to give up on Monday or Tuesday.
There's too much in June, which would attest to the fact that the attendance is down.
I don't care what weekend in April, I think, I don't care which weekday, I think April was a better decision, and that move, I just, even if it helped with those cherry sheets being more solidified, the attendance has dropped a lot.
Didn't they? We didn't, we didn't get the many sooner.
Because now we barely have anybody, unless it's a hot issue that, you know, we feel strongly about, senior center, the racetrack, we don't have people going, and nobody wants to go in June, and it's hot, and it's not air-conditioned, and yada, yada, yada.
You do, you do have air conditioning.
Well, I know, but do we turn it on?
No.
Yeah, do we? Anyway, these are the things friends even say, if I say June, they're...
Right.
They're not going to attend. And so I like an April date, myself.
I personally would like to sit in the auditorium in April rather than June, but I see a town administrator over there having a tough time in those streets.
So, thank you. Philosophically, yes, more attendance is always better, that's why we do this, for a living. But I do have a concern budget-wise. In order to get a budget together, even putting the state aside, to get a budget together realistically, to get it into the hands of FinCom for mid-February or late February, realistically, for an April...
You can do it.
...town meeting? Well, you can do it, but it's not a good budget, because...
Well, you can do it, but it's not a good budget because I'm now relying on what we've done from July to October. Because I need to stop budget numbers by November to be able to have a budget together and a finance book together by February. I know it sounds like a long time. It's not to pull a budget together. Now, if I'm looking at July to October or July to November, I'm not getting a real snapshot of FY23 to put FY24's budget together. I'm getting three months. It, it's too early. The last community I was in was the first week of May and I thought that was early. And that was tight. And I, because I had to literally present my first, well, they were a little rabid about getting the budget early to the board. So I had to actually present a budget to the board on, like, the first week of December. And to have a budget presentation ready the first week of December, it just requires, I mean, and here it's a little less rigorous, the process.
Yeah. Well, for many, many, so obviously we're not going to make the decision tonight, but for many, many years, it was April for much longer than it was June. And somehow, we managed to do it.
Oh, it's doable.
And we used to have our joint meeting with the finance committee in January. It was right after the new year, first, second week of January, whatever, when the department heads came in. And our budget, I mean, you know, I'm going to, you know, as they say, take it under advisement like when I'm in a hearing, but we did get, but we did manage to get the budgets done, one way or another, so.
I would just at least ask to think about a compromise somewhere in the middle. I understand after Memorial Day, kind of, everybody shuts down. If you went to a second Monday in May or, I, I get the spirit of what we're trying to do because, June, yes, people have checked out. I was a little surprised when I came here, I'm like, wow, June, that's late. But I, I think April puts it to a point, that extra few weeks, you've got to figure we've got holidays in the middle. I lose staff during holiday time.
Yeah, but we also, um, May is a lot of graduations and proms and this and that, but we'll, we're not going to, obviously.
Can I ask a very general question?
Oh, I'm sorry, you, you...
Chase had a...
No, I, yeah, I was just curious to, I was just curious of the thought process and I was unaware that it was in April previously.
Can I?
To me, the Monday in June, we're all still in school. Like, it's, you're no less busy in April than you are that first week of June. School goes until second or the third week of June, so.
Yeah, but...
On a Monday.
It's a beautiful, you know, it's beautiful weather and they're just not going to...
Even take graduation, I, they, it's usually the first Sunday, maybe Saturday in June. And there's parties on that Monday and, I mean, it's, anyways...
I've never been to a graduation party on a Monday. That's the only thing I'm trying to figure out.
You can ask the gentleman.
All right. So I just want to, before I look, I just want to know a little bit about how this committee operated. How did you arrive at your recommendations? Did you, I know there was a lot of give and take and a lot of debate and you pushed each other, as Larry said, which is always good for, you know, purposes of discussion. But did you take a vote on different issues? Or was it a consensus? So you, so you did vote?
We, we took a number of votes. There was a lot of consensus, but there was, there were some votes where we felt that there had been a lot of discussion and we wanted to go on record as, you know, a firmly established vote. Those votes were unanimous.
Okay, that was going to be my question, because I know you took meeting minutes and I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't look at your meeting minutes. But did you have any areas where there were split votes, three, two, where you couldn't reach? And if so...
Surprisingly, no, no, because I, I did serve on a committee and, in fact, I chaired a committee where, where the votes were four-to-one constantly.
But for all of yours, you were five-zero. Well, that's something.
Yeah, we, that is correct. And I think it's because we talked and talked and listened and listened and found a way that, in the collective judgment, benefited the town most. And that meant most of the time, most of the members walked away from their starting point.
It came around, sorry, I do.
I have one more question.
Oh, okay. Well, I get the brain in gear.
All right. And this is, I mean, we can do this again. I'm glad they're going to come back, but just because it's expression of my mind.
Well, I, we haven't decided whether they are, maybe just a representative.
Okay. Well, I mean, maybe we could have a meeting where we talk and then if we have more questions, then they can come back in like the third, I don't know, it's up to you in the third meeting. We meet on our own and then welcome the Mac again or...
Did you get the memo about if you had questions to forward them?
I did. But it's different, well, I sent some suggestions originally, but I think this was... I know, but I didn't, but when, you know, Chase raised his question, sometimes it leads to follow-up. So I guess I'm sorry if I didn't think of this before, but it reminded me of Larry's, the what-if, then-what, and why, or three things. I was curious on the, the town moderator's rights in his sole discretion or her sole discretion, but it's been him for a number of years now. Did you consider a check and balance on his authority in his or her sole discretion to make sure diversity, different, diverse viewpoints were heard, number one, and on the means of voting? And I guess what I'm thinking is, what if we are at a town meeting and it doesn't happen? I think, you know, our current, let me just start with that caveat, I think he does a good job. But, you know, what if it's a situation where, you know, town meeting does think it's one position coming forward, one position, we're not hearing diversity? Where, is there a check and balance on that role, so, that position's sole discretion? That's my first question. And the same, and the same for means of voting? Because I'm thinking, let's just say it's a meeting where we're not using our digital device, they don't work or for whatever reason, and it's a zoning issue and you need the three-quarters votes and, you know, whatever town moderator is in office looks and says, oh yeah, I think this is a three-quarter vote. And everyone's like, no, no, this looks like a simple majority, if anything. And they request by motion to have a hand count. Does this remove town meeting's right to make a motion for an actual count in those situations? Because it has arisen a few times where our moderator might have thought, I think it's a simple majority, and then we find out it was a three-quarters vote or...
Let me start with the first one. The feeling or some of the things that we heard from people who spoke with the committee was that they felt that very often at town meeting, the, it was not objective in terms of what was presented. The, the moderator maybe let a, people who had a specific agenda, maybe more time than they, than the opposing side. And so this was our effort to point out to the administrator that they need to be objective and present diverse and, you know, complete, complete viewpoints. Now, whether, whether you can hold him or her to that standard, we, we don't have any, we don't have any...
Enforcement.
We don't have any check on that. What we do have is a statement in the charter that says that this is what the moderator should be doing. The moderator wanted to propose to us that the, that we include something in the charter about electronic voting. We were very reluctant to do that because we felt that, as Mary just pointed out, if something happens in that meeting that the, all of a sudden, the electronics start not working, that there has to be some ability to do something, to obviously transact business in that meeting. So that's why our, our option was to give them, you know, place the authority to make the decision on how that voting, vote will occur in that town meeting with the town moderator. So that, that's the reason that that was put in.
Further, the state requires that where electronic voting occurs, there must be paper ballots sufficient in number to conduct all the rest of the business of the meeting. And they, those are physically on premises. It's worked out between the clerk and the moderator. Something else to keep in mind is that the moderator position in the Commonwealth is inherently strong. If the moderator and the clerk together are in an otherwise empty room for a town meeting that has been properly posted, that's a town meeting by law. So please understand that the moderator is by design. Why? Because you don't want him standing up like happened in the Polit Bureau in old Soviet Russia and all of a sudden, all these machine guns. That is melodramatic. And I'm only overstating it to try to explain why you gotta be able to run a meeting. This particular moderator, and I've sat 22 times when he's moderated, just him, says, let's not repeat, let's go pro-con, and he makes a point of saying that at the outset. I've known every, the first moderator I've known, I've known all, took office right after the Korean War. That's how, well, when you give your age in Roman numerals, you know? And they all said, say the same thing. A, B, A, B. And they seem to have a personal modesty. Yeah, I've got the authority, but it ain't my meeting, yours.
Sounds people. Does anyone else have any question or we could take this and study it a little bit more? And would the committee be willing to come back?
I think I am your surf.
Thank you, thank you.
Of course we will. I do, I do have, here, which I'll leave with Michelle, in case there's any press inquiries relative to our recommendations, that's the recommendations and you can just hand that to them.
I have a grammar, I have a grammar question.
Pardon me?
I have a grammar question.
It's just, I'm curious about it. You know, when you made uppercase, capital letters, however you, and then you defined it in the definitional section?
Uh-huh.
I'm curious why you, you didn't capitalize the V in voters when you mean the particular voters of the registered voters of the town of Sturbridge. That was the only one that you didn't capitalize. And I'm just assuming you had a discussion about why you chose to capitalize town and charter.
Larry, you want to take that one?
Sure. Over-capitalization takes the legs out from capitalization. Why not also the word resident? Why not the word employee? And on and on. And pretty soon, the exception is not capitalized and you've actually done the same thing upside down.
Right, but D is capital. If you look at the definitions, you say voters, capital V, and then you say the word little voters shall mean. I don't know why you're doing that then. I mean, voters is either going to be uppercase or it's not. You're either defining it as V, capital V?
I think, I think basically, the introductory, it's the introductory word. It's capitalized in all of them. And then after that, it's dependent. So for example, days, you know, F or E, it's now the new F, days, or E rather, days, warrant, all of those are capitalized. But then as you're getting into context...
Oh, I see, okay. Particularities.
You could take those just away, right? As labels, basically, for each of those four sentences, you could just let the verbiage stand on its own without the capital.
So, I mean, it's fine. I mean, I don't think it happened, so it's, it's, it's an argument that shouldn't be made. But if the word voters was used not meaning Sturbridge voters, then you would have had to have capitalized V in a legal document, because then that would be those specific voters as opposed to every other voter. But every time you use voter in here, I can't imagine you'd be talking about any other voter other than the voters of the town of Sturbridge. So I think you're okay, but...
Thank you.
Usually you capitalize not just to stress it, because you mean a specific, you know, body, you know, in a legal document.
If you can put that on a report card, we would be appreciative.
All right. Okay, um, well, hopefully to get this on the warrant for, of course, we have the, we haven't even opened the warrant yet.
In a few minutes.
Let alone close it, but we always have the...
Yes.
...privilege of reopening. We don't meet for two weeks. Gosh.
It's Wednesday in April.
And just for the people watching, this was an outstanding job. This, very professional and thorough and really appreciated. If, if I could say I've worked in communities with other charter review committees... Impressive, isn't it? It is. And I sat as the chair of my own charter review committee in my hometown. So I, I kind of been on the other side. And I have to say, this is just an, been an extraordinarily professional group, their interactions with our office and...
Right, and they have the experience.
Yes, the thorough nature of this and the concern for the town is just evident.
And the review of the charter every five years has certainly helped.
Well, we had those few months gap, which is on us. I'm curious, what kind of response did you get from residents when you said you reached out on them?
We, we did it through the internet, through the, you know, they were able to go on your website and submit.
But I mean, like, did 20 people, 50, 10?
No, I, I'm guessing it was...
No more than a handful.
Yeah.
That's how it always is when you put out...
No, you mean, you get folks who may talk to you, so maybe there's more there, but as far as formal submissions, it was...
It wasn't 50 or 100?
No.
I mean, the last one, we tried putting boxes, you know, with, with paper beside and pencil, saying, you know, leave your suggestions in there. I think we got one between the town, between the town hall and the library. I, I don't know what you do, and I'm sure if I, if we can come up with a solution, we're going to make a million dollars, but how you can get people to engage.
You guys are talking about term limits. I'd hate to exclude anybody, because right now we can hardly fill up the boards that we have, so.
When you look at your election, you know...
It's unimposed.
You look at your election ballots in towns and, you know, there's just trying to get people engaged. And I dare say, the recent Supreme Court, Massachusetts Supreme Court decision relative to open meeting, statements in open meetings, certainly not going to contribute to people who, you know, willing to run for office and sit there and...
Be abused.
Okay, so we're looking for a date.
Well, if we talked about it in the next meeting, maybe they can come back, the meeting after that.
Well, let's see, I'm lost here.
Maybe.
That would be a different, you know...
Madam Chair, while you're making a decision on dates, could I make an observation? That I think the board and the town administrator potentially will find useful. It's a first cousin, this observation, to the question that Mary just asked. And that is a sense, you may have had a different one and, and our colleagues not here, that there is a distance between the employees, who might, by the way, be called staff, and this board. I don't mean to say, I do not mean to say that you're distant individually or that you're aloof. I'm talking about the rhythm, the biomechanics of the town and the movement of information intra the local government. And there, just the observations made, people did come in. And the first thing that hit me anyway was, they don't know that. So if you choose to, you, you might want to dwell, this is extracurricular to the charter, it's more mood or atmosphere. If you choose to, you might want to dwell on a way to go beyond counting on somebody reading the minutes or watching meetings like this for actual, and this may be your practice, forgive me if I'm saying something that you're already doing, but actual face-to-face on the big things and the little things. One employee said, I worked here three years before I knew I was entitled to such and such and lost the opportunity for a revenue gain through interest for that period and it's beyond reach now, this person said. It had to do with retirement. Briefly, very briefly, maybe a minute and a half, if that, the committee did wonder about a full-blown, proper HR department. There is a personnel committee which has a 1948 ring... There is a personnel committee, which has a 1948 ring to it, personnel, but somebody handles insurance, and somebody this, and days off, and yes, there is a document, but the whole onboarding process that should never, I'm suggesting you may want to dwell on this, never ends. You're always onboarding, because it is a passing parade, not a standing army of employees. You all, in slow motion, do change membership. The world is not always paying attention to Sturbridge, so Sturbridge has got to pay attention to the world. Lot of moving parts. It's organic. And so I hope that I, I get to sit here for a minute, so here I am. I hope, as a resident, that you'll look for some self-perpetuating way to be close, close. Peas in a pod, we're all in it together. Every job is important. Listen, you don't mow the common nicely. Tourist comes and says, hmm, Lennox is looking better and better. Every job is important, especially when the snowplow doesn't show up in the school. Some get paid more than others. That's an impersonal force of the marketplace. So reaching, I sound like a minister or something, I'm not, I'm just hoping that you'll, you'll look for ways to live out what the words are supposed to mean. So thank you for putting up with me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Morrison.
Okay, our, I mean, next meeting is April 3rd, and then April 18th. It's a Tuesday because of the holiday in there. And then May 1st. I was looking for the board.
I can definitely make April 3rd, but after that, I don't think I can make it, so.
Well, that's fine. I mean, we're here anyway, right? That's one of our regularly scheduled meetings.
Right.
So.
You don't have huge agenda items coming.
I mean, Larry, I just want to comment on what he's saying, too. Yet that's very unfortunate. I don't know what employee you're talking about. And we all try to have, as you said, I know it's not personal, an open door kind of policy, where people can come talk to me, and I've had many staff in the past. We have had a TA turnover, and I don't think that's particularly helpful, keeping communication open and onboarding and all that type of thing, because we've had interims, and then, you know, so hopefully, now that we have Robin, she will be the one that, you know, reaches out for those of us who work. We can't really just stop in and visit with town staff when they leave work at 4:00. But having said that, so, you know, it's not an excuse, I'm just trying to explain why I think maybe there is a little bit of a disconnect, because we haven't really had a leader at the, at the helm that stayed for any given length of time, number one. But I mean, I would be open if we, you know, periodically, at every couple of months, had a, you know, an evening where we have coffee or whatever, and department heads come, and staff comes, and, you know, it's more of like a, like a meet and greet, if you will, but less of a meet and greet and more.
Well, not to be negative, but after a day's work, people would like to go home. You and I found out how, when we had the one-on-one, we met down on the common and.
Were available.
Nobody came.
Right.
I mean.
No, but I mean, but if it's staff, that feels that way.
Larry's instance with the staff person, I mean, there's plenty of information there. People need to avail themselves of it. There's a personnel handbook, which a question on retirement would be in there. People need to go to finance to ask questions. People, a lot of people don't understand the hierarchy of the town. The town administrator runs the day-to-day business. The selectmen do not. The selectmen oversee the town administrator. Everybody, all the selectmen, you get complaints. However, complaints should be passed on to the town administrator to handle. He is not up to an individual select person. Oh, how come you didn't pick select person? Instead of select board.
Won't fit on a sign.
Well, we, we debated, no, we debated that, and we decided.
No, no, I'm just kidding.
But we did. The stopper was, oh, let's go down the street, careful of that person hole cover.
Yeah, but Larry, we're at the point where you can't say any words anymore.
That ain't our fault. There's only a million words in the language. Find out.
Actually, they confirm that you can say all the words you want in a public meeting, right? So they, it's actually more open than it's ever been, so.
That's right. But in a controlled environment, it's going to still be, okay? So anyways.
Are you looking at the 17th of, usually meet on Monday night, right?
Oh, yeah, but.
So it'd be that Tuesday.
It's a holiday. That's why it's the 18th.
Which would be fine.
I mean, is the 3rd out?
Well, I mean, I may not be, please meet without me. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I take that back. I thought that was my holy week for Easter, but no, that's the day after Patriots Day, Monday.
Tax Day.
It's, yeah, I'm around for that.
I was, I was just looking at the conflict with the Tantascwa School Committee meeting, which is usually on Tuesday, but I think that we, it's been school vacations, I think it's moved later, so.
Oh, I am actually away the school vacation week myself. 18th, I'm not around.
Hey, oh.
Yeah.
Well, May, Ian's not around.
Well, no, it was April 3rd. Is that, that's a no? The next, our next meeting?
We can discuss it.
I have no trouble with April 3rd. I mean, it still gives us two weeks to digest, and for you people to put it in your calendar.
Yeah, we'll put it on April 3rd.
We'll have any more questions and clarifications and.
While you're.
Holy vote.
And while you're talking about it, Mr. Morrison, just to your point, the discussion on staff, we do have now, every other week, a staff meeting.
Oh, good.
And it's, sometimes people don't seem to rearrange their schedules to come to it, even though it's mandatory. Usually, for the most part, I have most of the team here. And it has been beneficial, where I can update them on things going on. We had some changes in healthcare contributions that I'm proposing in this year's budget. I'm able to share that with the staff. So it does give a little bit of an opportunity where people are now face-to-face, because what happens is sometimes departments are siloed, and they don't know what each other's doing, let alone what I'm doing. So to your point, the problem exists. There's, there's no question it does. And I'm hopeful, I actually like them weekly, but I got a lot of, what I said to the staff when I came here, I'd like to do them weekly, and they all kind of looked at me. So I, what about monthly? I said, no, not monthly. Every other week.
Our staff is physically separated, which is.
Which is why, yes.
Alienation, center office building.
So that's what you feel, which your feeling is there. It's.
Okay, so we shall put you people down for the 3rd. Okay?
Sounds good.
And Michelle and I will look at the agenda carefully.
Keep it light.
As far as time-wise.
So we don't have stuff in wait. I'm sure you were ahead.
We should have skipped right ahead for instance. I'm looking at them all the way.
Thank you for all your work, all the board members.
The education that that gentleman.
The charter.
If you want to sit on the review committee next time.
If he was.
I'll sit on it next time.
I am, I'm leaving shortly, because picking up a family.
Thanks. No, no, I, I mean, I.
Yeah, but I mean, would you, Logan. Logan for 10, so.
See, I'm going to.
If you want to jump, how long do you have?
Michelle.
We jump into executive session back.
If they, if they want to.
We're writing it out here.
We do this gentleman.
Now, this is fine. My book was upside.
Sorry, too, I accidentally wrote in this one, you lent me, so.
I wrote mine as well. So this is mine now. But I do have one at home that I'll.
I'll turn my unwritten one in from home.
Me, too.
Okay.
And then halfway through, I was like, oh, no.
I had to take it off and switch it around.
I made these, but on the town report. Good night, thank you. There were, some of it's upside down, yes, it's upside down. It stressed me out, I thought I could go through all of it.
It's the, the machine.
We have another.
Unless someone touched it, Mary.
Oh, wait, I missed the question.
What?
Oh, yeah.
Finance?
That was not the.
Works and police.
I know, but finance, we just.
But she, that was not, that person's backworking part-time, there's nothing personal there.
That's good, but I just feel it.
Just horrible, but we can't, we can't compete financially. She got a better job with better money, and she's coming back, she's working part-time, making more, closer to home and working for us part-time now.
Okay, so.
World right now.
Well, we can, these things ought to take about a half a minute, right?
Most of them should be better.
Yeah, okay, Mr., I told you I'd call on you, say your name.
Right, Mustakengis.
Okay, would you please explain what it is you would like to do?
Evening, everyone. My name is Ryan Mustakengis. I just started tree service business, and in order to get more customers, I would like to get a Hawker and peddle license to go door-to-door and get more customers.
Perfect.
For tree removal.
Yes. You have 11:00 AM to 8:30 PM. Have we gone that late?
I would probably cut it down just to.
Seven.
I would say 7:00 or 6:30. Just because people at night.
Yeah.
Don't want to get, you know.
Bothered.
Bothered, or if they're sleeping, like.
They want to walk up someone's driveway in the rural areas.
I'll be at 7:30, so.
That's where all those police calls to strange cars.
That's true, too. Like parents putting, you know, kids are going to bed.
Well, you're going to place when they open the door at 8 o'clock at night, you've walked up there, wouldn't drive, right?
Because this would only affect door-to-door, so if he had a set appointment with somebody for a time later than that, it wouldn't matter, he could still go and do that, and that's fine, right? This is just door knocking.
Oh, of course, yeah, this is, I mean, if they want, you know, if you have an appointment.
No, I'm just making sure, yeah.
Nine o'clock at night, and it's a.
But you want to go door-to-door, I don't want to say uninvited, but.
Uninvited.
Yeah, just randomly, right? Yeah, so I think 7:00 PM.
Find a house that has a lot of trees around, they're going to fall down, bang on the door, pop the come-down. Hundred percent.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Nope.
Gee, so that's usually the only restriction we put, time during COVID.
What did we change the time restriction to?
Please?
What did we change the time restriction to? Just so I can.
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the application for a Hawker peddle license for Ryan Mustakengis, for Ryan's tree service, with the one adaptation to end at 7:00 PM.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor? Gee, all set?
Thank you very much.
Well, you were the quorum without me.
Now, is he being on vacation?
I trust everybody. Yeah, he went on a vacation with his friend, uh, Rameen.
Sorry.
Austria, Switzerland.
He needs to start up a town government.
I was like, when we started, I was like, oh.
He's flying in, and we had driven him, so he doesn't have his car.
If you don't do this, it's got to be like boring. Exactly. It's got to be boring, like, well, tito, let's take care of the teeth, if it's not something you're into.
Eight-four-seven.
It'd be for us, actually, because we, life is entertaining, but.
No, no, I ain't getting. Before then, okay. Okay, why don't we? Okay, um, okay, we have some resignations, and then we'll go back to those other things that I'm sure Robin will want to talk about.
Well, we also have the consideration.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have a couple.
Yeah.
Okay.
But if we just get this.
Want to get through the resignations, okay?
Yeah. Okay, we have a letter of resignation from Christina Lucier from, her position is finance clerk. Somebody want to make a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion to accept a resignation from Christine Lucier, finance clerk.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay. Okay, then we have a letter from Mark Argello, letter of resignation from the DPW. Okay, do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to accept the resignation of Mark Argello from the Sturbridge Department of Public Works.
I'll second that. I just want to say, I've had a chance to work with Mark a bunch of times in Sturbridge, and he was always professional, and he will be missed.
Okay. Gee, any other discussion, all in favor? Okay, and then the letter of resignation from Carrie Sewell from the Police Department.
I will move to accept the resignation of Carrie Sewell from the Sturbridge Police Department.
Second that.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, and also, we have the, I have it. Okay, was there another one?
Those are the resignations.
Nope, that's the three. And then we're back to F.
Do you want to go to town administrator updates?
Yes.
Couple updates quick that I can give?
Yes.
Okay. First, I just want to announce, on Friday, the 10th, I went up to Deerfield to hear the governor. She had a press conference and an announcement. She has established an office of a director of rural affairs, so that person will be a liaison for all the rural and central and western Massachusetts communities, and that was actually a pretty nice thing to hear. We don't always get recognized out of Boston for this side of the state.
One more person speaking for us?
One more person speaking for us, so that's, that's something good. I would like to thank the DPW for the snow removal during the sort of nor'easter that was and wasn't, depending on where you were, literally. They did a tremendous job. Those iffy storms are extremely hard, the shift back from rain to snow and back and forth is very hard. They did a great job with that. And I want to thank them for the cleanup outside the burial ground for the Daughters of the American Revolution presentation. I would like to say I was extremely flattered and humbled. I received from the National Daughters of the American Revolution, a 250th Commander Award for the 250th birthday for the efforts in doing that. So it's in my office, I was actually pretty humbled by that. And one thing I mentioned to Mary very quickly, my employment contract says any outside employment outside of adjunct teaching in the horses has to come to the board. I volunteer for an organization called the Canine Center for Behavioral Studies as a project coordinator volunteer for them. They have asked that they want to consider giving me a stipend for some of my work. It's not an hourly wage or anything like that, I, my home laptop on my own time, and I just want to make sure that the board is okay. I don't know if that needs to go to formal vote, or if it can be done here.
Yeah, we usually take a vote. It's only ever come up once in 15 years.
So I don't know if you want to do that, or.
Yeah, somebody.
Yeah. Make them, just a motion to approve your stipend, or your part-time work, or.
Yeah, for, it's, yeah, it's a Canine Center for Behavioral Studies. Stop dogs from biting people.
Oh, she approved Robin and her canine center.
Robin and her canine stuff, okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, so I'll second Chase's motion, absolutely.
Thank you. Any discussion, all in favor?
I didn't ask, they offered, so I said, I got one back to my board.
By all means.
Well, that'll cover everything.
Yeah, okay, so now we're down to what, F? Is that where?
Constituent.
F, yeah. Want to go, want me to go? Move in, roll it.
Sorry.
So F, consideration for the action on the reclassification. That's Michelle's position of executive assistant. The Personnel Board did vote for this and support this. It puts it to a grade five. Part of the reason it gets elevated is that the Personnel Committee also has approved, and I'm going to move forward with the receptionist clerk pool, pool clerk across the street. That position would report to Michelle, so she'd have supervisory responsibility. And then the other thing that I think is, I want to centralize constituent affairs department, basically, and that would be Michelle constituent liaison. So any constituent complaints that come to you, you forward them to Michelle. Everything that comes in, she monitors the town administrator sort of complaint line, if you will. She'll have a spreadsheet that she's going to design, when the complaint comes in, who She'll have a spreadsheet that she's going to design when the complaint comes in, who she assigns it to, what the follow-up is, did someone call the person back? So it's a customer service for constituents. That will fall on her desk in conjunction with overseeing across the street. And I thought for that level of responsibility, it needed a title change as well as an upgrade. Personnel Committee did vote to support that, so.
Questions?
I don't need a vote on that.
I think it's great, having you two in place has been, just a little bit of time has been so much more stable, and everything is just better and organized, and it's going in the right direction.
Thank you.
Okay, so somebody want to make a motion to approve the?
I will make a motion on changing the title and the reclassification from executive assistant to administrative coordinator and constituent liaison.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quickly, consideration and possible action with the creation of a Disabilities Commission. I had a few different things come up about accessibility in town for people with physical challenges particularly. I asked a group of three constituents to come in and chat with me about it, and one of them does work on, her job is to actually assist towns in establishing disability committees. She is willing to do that in a volunteer capacity for her hometown. Her bosses approve that. And so what we talked about, I was going to do something more informal. She suggested that we exercise the authority to establish a Sturbridge Disabilities Commission, which we do not have. It doesn't have to go where it has an overreach of, you know, putting fines on handicap parking necessarily, but it can, it deal with, again, issues that come up that we may not be aware of. I would have to appoint 60% of the people that would be appointed would have to be struggling with some disability. So I'm proposing right now a five-member board. I think at this point, what I would need is approval from you, but it actually has to be approved by town meeting. I'm putting it to you informally. I think for a vote, I did put it as a draft on the warrant, though, as well, because if it's a true disabilities commission under the Massachusetts general law, it has to be approved by committee, so.
Okay, how's the board feeling?
I think it's great. I think it's important, and I think that it's a good idea.
Yeah. Even for them just to raise small concerns that we would otherwise overlook because we don't experience it day-to-day.
That's exactly what it is.
It's perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we just.
So go.
Beautiful, so I don't think I need a motion for that when.
Yeah, no.
Okay, it's just going to go forward on the warrant.
Yeah.
Okay. The next two are waiving fees for town imposed permits and our application fees for the senior center and the library HVAC, I should say, library HVAC and the senior center. I guess traditionally, we have waived fees within town.
Right, I mean.
It's our own money.
It's a common thing.
It would be us paying us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you want to vote on H, you could probably take H and I together, I guess, so.
Yeah, okay, somebody want to make a double motion?
Yeah, I'll make a double motion to waive all town imposed permit and application fees for the Joshua Hyde Library Atriac Accessibility Project, and to waive all town imposed permit fees for the senior center renovation and additional, addition project.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Beautiful. Then we have consideration and possible, to approve and sign the warrant for the election. That is from our clerk.
Okay, and I already lost.
Pro forma, so.
I already lost the paper you gave me. Oh.
That one.
That's because.
I was going to say, so did I.
That's because we signed it.
It's already signed, so I guess you should vote.
To make.
Ratify the action of, let's change that to ratifying the action.
For the annual town election for the candidates for the following offices. Two for three years on the Board of Selectmen, one for three years on the Board of Assessors, two for three years on the Sturbridge School Committee, two for three years Tantascwa School Committee, one for three years Constable, one for three years Board of Health, two for three years Recreation Committee, one for three years zoning Board of Appeals, three for three years Library Trustees, two for one year on the Library Trustees. The town's website actually has the ballot, so you can find people's names, and there's a few that have races, and when it says, vote for two, you don't have to vote for two.
Bullet vote.
You bullet vote, or you don't even have to vote for selectmen, say, okay? Okay, now, we need to open the town, annual town meeting warrant.
Do you need a motion for the town election?
Yeah.
Oh, we didn't.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the warrant for the 2023 annual town election.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, now, the vote to open the annual town meeting warrant.
I did put a draft together, there's probably will still be a few more things to be added, but the bulk of the draft is together.
Yeah, well, we just, we're not going to go through.
Right. No, 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 no. I just wanted you to have something official to open. I know sometimes you have nothing. I prefer to.
Do we have a motion to open?
I will make a motion to open the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Discussion.
Want a motion to close?
It was done, it's done, it looks good.
Yeah, well, we usually sometimes actually set up a special meeting.
Yeah.
Just for the warrant, to vote whether to place in support.
I don't think that there's going to be a lot on this, other than mostly your pro forma articles. I don't think there's a lot, but, however you want to do that.
Takes us a long time sometimes, trust me. Okay, old business. Ian?
None.
Chase?
No.
I have none. New. Ian?
None.
Chase?
None.
Okay, correspondence, and a clerk skipped out. Correspondence we have is from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Fisheries in game, considering the purchase of the fee interest in land located in the town of Sturbridge. No, it's eighty plus or minus acres of wildlife habitat. Do we know which parcel it is?
I'm not sure yet, I've got to go digging.
Yeah, I mean, because I can't tell.
I couldn't tell from that, and I just haven't had, frankly, the time this last week to.
Been busy.
Just a little. So, I'll, I will find out more information.
Yeah.
Except that correspondence from you to take a look at it.
Okay, and that's.
Find out what they want to do with it.
That's it, correspondence, approval, citizens forum. Okay, we have executive session.
Not to ensure.
Two, the clerk's not here. Want to read it, Chase?
You've got it. Executive session per MGL C-30A, section 21A, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with police union if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position, and the board and chair so declares, and not to reconvene in an open session.
Aye, so declare.
Second.
Second. Yes. Let's keep saying words.
You read the motion and you seconded it.
Yeah, that's who.
Two jobs.
Yes. Oh, second, yes.
Okay, so we have an executive session?
Yep.
Let's just wait for the mics.